Twenty-fourth commission meeting. I'd like you to silence your cellphones if you will, and we'll be led by Commissioner Barth and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jeff. Meeting documents are available for anybody's review next to Commissioner Kelly, and if you need a hearing device, Robert someplace.
He is not.
No, he isn't. Can't? You'll have to get him from Ken, sorry. This morning, we're going to recognize the employees who are honored by the South Dakota Association of Counties. And I have tons of paperwork here. Is this the one? Nope, that's the service one. Doug, if you'd like to come forward, we have a whole bunch of safety awards. Now, just read these. We have a gold level and a platinum level, and it says that the employees of Minnehaha County have received the safety, buy the safety benefits incorporated on behalf of South Dakota Municipal Believe, the WC Fund, which I think is the word, or Comp Fund. Now, tell me what SDPAA is.
South Dakota Public Insurance Alliance.
You guys had more accurate names. Well, we received two awards, one the gold level and the other one a platinum level for our wonderful safety records. This was through this year, if I remember right, through 2012, actually. So Doug, congratulations on the safety awards. Thank you. Appreciate your safety because obviously we don't want to increase our costs by having significant accidents. Now, I have a number of awards, and instead of going back and forth a bunch of times, I'm just going to read these. We have a couple people who've already gotten their awards, as I understand. But if you'd come forward, and maybe you can just stand in the front, and we'll eventually take your picture probably, and give you these gifts. And the first one is to Pat Krupa, Minnehaha County's Veteran's Service Award. Says, "It is with respect and appreciation that we recognize your 30 years of dedication, service, and commitment to county government, awarded Monday, the 16th of September at the 99th Annual South Dakota County Convention." Congratulations, Pat.
Thank you.
We'll just have you stand up front, because then you can be embarrassed for a long time. The next award is to John Harris, and I think I saw it, yeah, John, for Minnehaha County Deputy Sheriff Sergeant. Same responsibilities, if you will. It's respect and appreciation that we recognize your 25 years of dedication, service, and commitment to county government. Thank you, John.
Thanks.
Now, I took it apart before I gave it to you. I'll let you put it together. The next one's to Ron Christensen. There he is. "Is with respect and appreciation that we recognize your 35 years of dedication, service, and commitment to county government." Congratulations, Ron. To Tom Peterson. Tom's working too hard someplace. Says, "With respect and appreciation, we recognize your 35 years of dedication, service, and commitment to county government." So we'll get that to Tom. Next one is Steve Williams. Steve has been with county government and the Highway Maintenance Department for 30 Lynn Crowell. Good morning. "It's with respect and appreciation that we recognize your 35 years of dedication, service, and commitment to county government in the Minnehaha County Assistant Juvenile Detention Center." Thank you, Lynn. Jeff LaMere. Jeff, "It's with respect and appreciation that we recognize 35 years of dedication to the Minnehaha County Juvenile Case Worker." Thank you, Jeff. To James Hawkins. James isn't here. Deb Johnson could not make it correct. Alicia, did I say that right? Hostie.
Yes.
"It's with respect and appreciation that we recognize your 25 years of dedication, service, and commitment to Minnehaha County as a Minnehaha County Appraiser." Thank you very much. To Diane Ripkema. I always say that, Ron. Is Diane here? No?
I can take it.
Thank you. Make sure she gets that. We don't put up with many fees up here. To Cheryl Olson. Cheryl's not here. And last but not least, Norma Erickson. "It's with respect and appreciation that we recognize your 40 years of dedication, service, and commitment to Norma Erickson, Minnehaha County Assistant Treasurer." Norma, that's incredible. There are very few people who are in one place for 40 years, and we're very thankful for you. Let's give all of these people a round of applause. I don't want a photo bomb.
Yeah.
Photo bomb.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Obviously, collectively, that amount of service and dedication to county and to its taxpayers is incredible. That adds up to a significant number, and we do appreciate that extended service. Thank you again.
Now, we're on to routine business. Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two is to approve the county commission minutes of September 10th, 2013.
Approve the minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of 9/10/2013. Any changes or corrections? If not, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $912,220.32.
Give the bills.
A motion and a second. Any comments? If not, those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four are reports. The auditor's account with the county treasurer as of August 31st, 2012. The register of deeds, official statement of revenue collected during August 2013. The Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center report for August 2013. Actually, the auditor's account was August 31st, 2013. Those have all been received and are placed on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
So move routine action.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Anyone have any comments? If not, those in favor of routine action say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to consider a motion to approve a salary increase for Rich Leitz, property tax administrator, for the auditor's office from 1907 to 1908, $26.96 per hour, effective September 25th, 2013. Carrie Dever.
Good morning, Carrie. Do you have any comments?
None, other than to say Bob is here to explain that further if you have any questions for him.
Thank you. Bob, would you like to make some comments?
I would indeed. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing us to be up here this morning. This amendment was to request a step increase for Rich Leitz for his outstanding contributions during the budget processes. This step increase would also be in response to his acceptance of the new duties not covered in the job description formulated three years ago. So I would respectfully request for this for Rich.
Anyone have any questions of Bob?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the step increase for Rich. Rich, thank you for your service. We appreciate your support and significant time investment in the budgeting process. Those in favor of the increase, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Bob.
There are no application for abatement, no notices and requests, and no planning and zoning notices. The next item are petitions for compromise of lien. John Pecus.
Yeah, this is going to take a while, guys. We've got about five of them. So anyway, turning to the first DPNO is number 29559. The auditor's office received an application to compromise a lien. The applicant currently has sold her property out in Garrettson. During the title search, the county aid lien was discovered, and it was primarily against her soon-to-be ex-husband. Now, currently, they are still married, but that lien is in the amount of $499.60. It was related to public defender services, and it was filed just two months ago in July. Now, currently, that individual is residing as a guest of the state of South Dakota at the South Dakota State Penitentiary. However, the current applicant, her name does not appear on the lien. The applicant and her ex-husband originally purchased the property together in 2006. However, the court, on October 31st, 2012, awarded the applicant sole possession of the property as part of the stipulation agreement related to a separation. And anyway, part of the reason that was given to her was to facilitate her moving out of state, to put distance between both she and her ex-spouse, and to allow for that distance to also be present to prevent any problems with their children as well. Although they technically are still married, the deed was already passed over to his soon-to-be ex-wife, and that was, of course, before there was this $499.60 for the public defender. So, once the divorce is completely finalized, you will actually notice that this person's interest in the lien purely is in the situation where, although there was a legal separation, they haven't been divorced yet, legal separation also splits the assets between the party and their financial obligations, and it can be legally binding. So, the applicant is actually requesting a release of the lien against the real estate transaction with no payment from her. The lien would, once again, be against her soon-to-be ex-husband. If you grant the lien on the real estate, the current amount of $499.60 being held in escrow with the applicant's attorney will be used to make payment on, believe it or not, there's a second mortgage. So, this would allow the sale to go through and to go ahead and proceed with, I think, what she wants to do in the near future. So I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second. We have a motion and a second. If the applicant is here, she is not, I will remind anyone on these next five compromises of lien that if the applicant's here and wants to make comment, they can stay at their seat, make those comments, do not need to be identified, and we'll pursue the solution at some point.
Yeah, I just want to be clear, and my motion was to release the lien against the applicant with the remainder to be held against her ex-husband.
Thank you, John. Anybody have any questions of John? No comments? We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next DPNO is 50528 and 49207. The auditor's office received an application for a compromise of lien submitted by the individual. There is no real estate involved with this transaction for this request of compromise. It appears that the request was generated after he made a few initial small payments on the lien account after his release from being a guest at the South Dakota State Penitentiary. There are two liens against the applicant. The first is for a court-appointed attorney services and public defender services totaling The services were provided to both the applicant in some instances on behalf of a minor child in an abuse and neglect case that was filed against the applicant. The second lien, DPNO 49207, is listed in the name of the minor child only in that abuse and neglect case. However, the records indicate that they were all charges for attorney representation in the case for that applicant totaling $4,559.30. No payment has ever been made on that particular account. The applicant owns property at 5600 West 14th Street. According to the records in the equalization office, the property is currently valued at $67,274. The second half of the 2011 taxes payable in 2012 are still owing on the property, and the entire 2012 taxes payable, of course, in 2013. The outstanding balance is $1,886.17. The applicant appears to have a monthly income of $928, primarily from social security disability. He lists assets of $69,260, consisting primarily of the value of the real estate. His liabilities are $13,411.80, consisting primarily of the county aid lien of $7,433.63, and the outstanding property tax bill. He also detailed his living expenses, which we all had an opportunity to review, and that he claims that he just simply doesn't have enough money to make any payments on this particular lien account. There does not appear to be any monthly mortgage payment, however, listed on his monthly expenses, so it looks like he owns it free and clear. He's requesting a release of the lien in full with no payment of any kind on both liens due to financial hardship, and apparently he will be here today. All right. Well, apparently, he also didn't show today. I have several concerns related to this. We have an individual that owns apparently a property free and clear to the tune of well over $50,000, and he has costs that are due and owing related to legal representation, not only for himself, but also for his minor child, and I will not make a motion in this case. If someone else wants to do it, he can do it.
I would make a motion to deny the lien request.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to deny the request. Does anyone have any comments?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, Joe.
John, why the odd numbers on restitution, so to speak? I mean, people make payments on their liens of $87. What's going on here? I mean, I don't write checks for 87 bucks if I owe 3,000 or something.
Eighty-seven, well, ironically, the only thing I can opine on that is that the magic number for a court-appointed attorney hour is roughly 87-plus dollars. So I'm just wondering if he feels that he got an hour of work, so he's paying for an hour. That's just my opining off the top of my head, but there's no magic number with 87 other than the fact that that's the number that was set by the Supreme Court. Well, I don't know. Am I wrong, Kirsten?
It's somewhere in that.
Yeah.
But I have no idea either.
I'm sure Cindy, Cindy, that's about the right number, isn't it?
It is about the right number, and sometimes a judge will court order them to pay part of their legal fees.
Right.
So that could be it.
Last time I had to opine, my wife gave me chemicals to clean the bathroom. We have a motion and a second. Is the applicant here? Again, just a request. If not, we have a motion and a second to decline. Those in favor of declining, say aye. Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Item C.
Mr. Chair, I actually, after going through the paperwork on this, I actually represented one of the individuals that currently has a lien that wants to be expurgated. So although it's not the applicant, it is a person closely related to the applicant, and I'm in naked conflict with being a prior attorney, so I can't have any involvement with this particular lien. So I'll turn it over to Mr. McFarland.
Commissioners, when this application was originally submitted, it was only for one lien, which was in the amount, which was DPNO 57643, in the amount of $3,317.80. When the initial application was filed, this is the only one of the liens that is only in the name of the applicant. When we started to research the request a little bit further, and that we found that her name was also attached to two other liens. One, DPNO 3790, which was in her name, and that of an ex-spouse, and that lien was for And then we found another lien, DPNO 84, in the name of the applicant, and another individual who we've been unable to determine what the connection there is, but we think it is probably an ex-spouse, and that is for $1,943.40. All three of the liens are for a wide variety of services that range all the way from liens for human services, public defender, court-appointed attorney, services at the South Dakota Human Services Center. So there is quite a long line and a history dating, I believe, all the way back in some instances from 1985 all the way up through the current year. And as we went through that, we could find very little evidence of payment on any kind on these liens, though there were some small ones. Primarily, what the applicant is doing, and I think it was generated by the fact that she had received some sort of notice back in December of last year about, once another charge went on her lien account, I think that's what spurred the application. And she is just stating that she receives $700 per month in social security disability, though she hasn't provided us the documentation to show that, and that she claims she's on a representative payee program through Southeast Behavioral, and she listed nothing for assets or liabilities on the application. We did ask for some documentation so that we could begin the process of trying to determine whose liens were whose during the periods of marriage, but she couldn't provide us the marriage documents or the divorce documents because of the cost of obtaining those documents, she said, was prohibitive for her, and that. So what she's requesting is a release of all of the liens in full with no payment of any kind on all of the liens that have her name on it due to financial hardship, and she's just stating that her current monthly income of $700 through the Rep Paye Program at Southeast doesn't give her anything to make payment on these particular liens. So, and in fairness, we didn't do a whole lot of research into DPNO 3790, the one that had the $11,000, to try to figure out whose were, you know, who the services were for, because we had no reference as far as the periods of marriage or anything like that to try to figure that out, so.
Thank you, Ken. Appreciate the extra work in trying to figure this one out. Anyone have any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I guess I see this as an incomplete application, you know, she's not giving us her income taxes or her divorce decree, these kinds of things, and I'm not inclined to favor it at this point.
John, you indicated that the applicant is not here, but I'm wondering if the representative payee is here by chance.
I've tried, you know, before I left town, I tried to make contact with the Rep Paye with Southeast for some additional information on this one, and never had a return phone call back on this one.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hyburger?
I just think we also need more evidence of, I mean, there's no name in here of who the representative payee is. There's no evidence that there actually is one, that they didn't even return the phone calls to Ken. There's just a lot of stuff missing on this application.
Mr. Chairman, if we were to reject this at this time, they could always come back and apply again, I think, so.
I believe that's correct.
I'm going to make a motion to deny this.
I'll second that.
Is there a motion? There's a second? We have a motion and a second to decline, and I'm guessing all three, correct, of the demands? Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes four to zero with one extension.
Next, we have DPNO number 45768, and in this particular request, the amount is in Currently, the individual is requesting a compromise of lien. It is, well, let's see if I got the right. Yeah, exactly. I've got $73, or $79.30 to compromise the payment for one half of the debt incurred during the marriage to his current wife, with the remaining debt balance of $971.70 to be left to, of course, his wife's name only. County aid assistance was given to her in January 2003. Then, there was a divorce, and then on June 10 of 2012, that amount would be left against the wife. Now, currently, the wife also has another county aid lien. That's DPNO 55360, reflecting charges from 2005 to 2013. Currently, the applicant is requesting that you grant his request to clear his name from the lien with acceptance of the $79.30 payment for his one half of the debt that he and his ex-wife incurred together during their marriage. The remaining amount on DPNO 45768 for the lien amount of $971.70 plus the $79.30 that half would remain only in the name of his current ex-wife, as well as all the amounts from DPNO 55360. That's the current request. So, given the fact that that would be half of the amount that was incurred, I'll make that motion. I don't know if I'll get a second.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to accept. Is that correct?
Yes.
The compromise. Commissioner Kelly?
John, as I understand, then he'll be releasing the lien on payment of half of what was incurred while they were married.
Correct.
Fine.
Any other questions? Again, I'm assuming that the petitioner is not here, our applicant. We have a motion and a second to accept the request. Everyone understand where the balance goes?
Balance goes against the ex-wife.
Correct. Thank you, Jeff. If so, we may need an individual roll call on this one, I think.
Commissioner Barth?
Yes.
Hyburger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Pecus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes, I guess not. You never know. Thank you. Is that directed at somebody?
We have another, we have one more. This is actually on a recommendation of Huguen Associates, our collection agency. This is on DPNO number 57230, and this is in the amount of $2,495.57. You'll notice there was, at least in my information, a lack of a briefing memo on this one. However, what we can glean from the recommendation is that apparently the applicant currently is agreeing to make a payment 50% within the next 30 days of the $2,495.57. With the, given the fact that we've established a precedent, but no policy on accepting 50% with the precedent being set, I will make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Normally, I wouldn't accept this idea without more documentation, but on the recommendation of our collection people, I think this is reasonable.
Commissioner Kelly?
Just a comment on the precedent. I really think we have to look at these individually and not, I'm reluctant to call it a precedent because I think there are cases where it's legitimate, and there's cases where it's not.
I would like to just follow up on that comment. Dick, I certainly agree with you on that. The other thing that I think that needs to be noted on this one is that this particular applicant has over $100,000 in medical bills, and to get what we're getting in a settlement probably is the best deal that we'll ever have. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the recommendation.
Can I comment very briefly?
Absolutely.
Just, one of the reasons why we talked about this, and this goes back, I believe, before any of you were actually on the commission, we were having a particularly tough budget year, but I think we carry currently, and this is just ballparking, about $18 million in legal liens, and you can imagine what our budget would look like if 50% of those came in this year. Would we have a budget problem? I mean, it's a fire sale. I mean, if we took 50 cents on the barrel just to get some of those liens, and I don't even want
even want to get into hospital liens. You can triple that.
Thirty-one million.
So, you know, I mean, you know, the idea is that, you know, we'll meet you halfway because wouldn't it be nice to have that money in our coffers?
Forty-nine million altogether.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's just an observation.
The other observation you made is I don't understand why we never had a budget problem.
Yeah, exactly.
We always have a budget.
That's why we have it now.
Yep.
We have a motion and a second to accept the 50%, which I believe is $1,247.79. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
The next item is an opportunity for public comment.
I will, I'm sorry, Julie, what I would like to do is, most of us on the commission are aware of a significant need that's come up in the state's attorney's office, and I asked Aaron to come this morning to brief us on that, and we will address that. I know that's unusual, but things change dramatically on short notice sometimes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Aaron McGowan, Minnetonka County State's Attorney. I'm here today to ask the commission respectfully to reconsider one of my personnel requests made earlier in the budget process, and that is due to some significant changes we have had within our office related to outside agencies. Recently, the police department, the sheriff's office, and highway patrol has gone to a new video/audio recording system called Arbitrator, and although it provides a lot more benefits to those offices, it has placed an extra burden on my office. Currently, we are on pace to copy and provide some 24,000 video recording copies as far as discovery requests to defense counsel, sometimes to multiple co-defendants within a single case. As you know, we handle over 10,000 adult criminal cases a year. Unfortunately, with the new Arbitrator system, it is, it takes twice as much time to pull one of those single videos off of the server. Previously, we could put a video onto a CD. There's no longer enough space on a single CD, so it has to be placed on a DVD, and it takes physically twice as long for our investigator to pull that off of the system and provide it to defense counsel. We just, quite frankly, don't have the manpower to do that. We haven't added an investigator position to our office since, I guess, before I started in 1999. We have one investigator in our juvenile division, only one in our adult criminal division. Quite frankly, I view this request as benefiting three offices because not only do my staff need those pieces of discovery and putting together and prosecuting cases, but obviously, we have to provide those to the public advocate as well as the public defender, and they can't properly advise their clients until they have those discovery materials, and quite frankly, we've fallen quite far behind in those statutory obligations. This is something that will benefit three offices, it will increase and benefit judicial economy and efficiency, and we are required to do this as part of our statutory obligations. So I would respectfully ask the commission to reconsider my previous request just for the investigator position so that we would have another individual to assist Greg in that process, so we can fulfill those obligations. I'm not the technical expert on this, Greg is present if you do have questions about the system or what this has added to his responsibilities.
So anyone have any questions of Aaron? Commissioner Peckus?
I just heard of this just now, but I'll, the goal here, of course, with the video is that it might take a little bit longer to create the DVD, but once it gets into the hands of defense counsel, the hope is that they'll be entering a plea, because video is tough to crawl over if you're a defense lawyer. So, you know, the benefit there is that it may create a little bit cost upfront, but in the end run, we're going to be saving that in the backend when we get these cases quickly through the system as opposed to having jury trials, which take a lot of taxpayer time and money. Am I incorrect?
Absolutely, Commissioner. In addition to providing the discovery, as you know, we oftentimes stack, you know, 30 or more cases on a single trial day. Our staff has to prepare for all of those in the event they don't result in a plea, and Greg spends a lot of overtime and last-second hours doing edits to those because we have to reflect a court order as far as a motion, limine, or pull a mention of a previous offense off a DWI tape, so we actually have to edit all of those in preparation of trial for cases that don't go, and there just aren't enough hours in the day to do that right now.
Commissioner Kelly?
I don't know if you're planning, I would like to hear from Greg on the Arbitrator method or system.
Do you want to explain a little bit about the change in technology, Greg?
Basically...
Greg, you'll have to come to the mic. Sorry. And you do have to give us your name and address.
And Greg, you have to keep it on a level we can understand.
I'll try, Commissioner. Greg McNamara, investigator with the state's attorney's office. I live here in Sioux Falls.
Commissioner Kelly, what's your question?
Well, can you just give us a brief description of what the Arbitrator method is, why it's doubled and...
Okay. It's actually a more efficient method. It has a higher quality, higher bitrate than the previous system. It has current update to the software systems that are supplied through Panasonic, which is the vendor that they go through. However, there are two video cameras now in the patrol cars, one in the backseat area that keeps an eye on the person being transported as well as the officer up front. Effectively, that doubles the size of the particular videos that we download for the simple reason that instead of one camera and an audio track, it has two cameras. So the amount of information going on to the DVDs and CDs that we previously burned is now doubled. And the recording system not only has the two cameras, but it also has two audio tracks. And usually, one is for the in-car mic, that's inside the patrol car, and the other one is one that the officer wears on his lapel. Now, if there's a two-man unit, which the police department does have multiple two-man units, each officer will have a lapel mic. So in some cases, you may have three audio tracks.
And they each have to be recorded separate, or...
On a separate channel, yes, Commissioner.
Transcribed separately, okay.
Other questions? If I might, Aaron, you can verify this, but in our conversation, we've even had a judge who was threatened to dismiss cases unless we could get caught up to speed rather quickly, and frankly, we're seeing again, as we've talked about in our budget hearings, a number of cases have dramatically increased. I don't remember the percentage off the top of my head, but it's become crazy.
That's correct, Commissioner. We did have a judge on the record threatened to dismiss, and we weren't able to provide all of the videos in a timely manner. I've had homicide cases with over 50 videos, so some of our more time-intensive, more complex cases, it takes a significant amount of time for us to provide the discovery just physically. So it's kind of the perfect storm with our increased felony caseload and the new switch over to Arbitrator where there just aren't enough hours to get it out timely.
Thank you, Greg, and thank you, Aaron. This is the reason I frankly asked Aaron to come this morning, because this is a significant issue that needs to be addressed, and they're working as hard as they can to keep up, but right now, we have incredible influx. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, I know Aaron's got to leave, but I would like to bring this up during old business, and, old or new, I don't know which, and take action on it today if possible. I think his needs are pretty immediate and...
I don't know that we need to wait, do we?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know if we, can we do it during this public?
I don't know why not.
I don't know why not.
Mr. Chairman, I think that we have to have it as an agenda item before we can take action.
Ken?
It's one of the things we were confabbing on back there. You have a scheduled item to adopt the budget, and that later on in the agenda, and that one of the things, and as you know, we have had some changes, which I've detailed to you since the time you adopted the provisional budget and what we're doing, and even from the time that you had the public hearing back in early September. So, we do feel that if you do want to incorporate a change into the budget, even beyond what we've done so far, I believe you can do that as long as you take the action on the agenda at that time. So I would, I would say that you will have to wait until you have the action to adopt the budget. I'll go through the list of changes that we've done so far from the provisional. If this is one that you want to add, that's all right. Now, we're going to need time. If you approve this, we need to redo the official means of finance and the official budget that each one of you has to sign. Now, this change, if I'm not mistaken, is, it's in total, it was a $56,002 budget item on that, for the cost of the investigator. So we'll have to adjust the budget by that amount, and that as we, before you adopt it, and then you need to give us time to do the means of finance so that you can sign off on, as part of the official adoption.
Is that a problem? That's not a problem?
We can do it. We just may not have it for you today, the sign, or the, you know, right away this morning.
So the short answer is, we include it on item 15 as a, we can do it. Commissioner?
I just want to comment again about the difficulties. Our state's attorney has, you know, 28.5% increase in felony crime last year, 28.5%. Whenever I go around and talk to people, none of them know this. For whatever reason, you know, we're aware of so very many other things, the number of Walmarts coming to town, whatever, but nobody knows that felony crime is up 28.5% last year, and it appears to be up double digits again this year. I guess I would ask our civil attorney if he has any thought on how many are coming up this year. But it's not just drugs, although drugs are serious. There is human trafficking, there's violent attacks, there's, you name it, it runs the whole gamut. Misdemeanor crime is up on a huge level. Our state's attorney has to cope with all of this, a 28.5% increase in felony crime, and, and we're expecting them to absorb that burden without any additional resources. It's very sad.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Otherwise, we will take this up on item 15.
I think maybe Aaron would like to clarify the rise in amounts, just to make sure everyone has the same information.
Aaron McGowan, state string. Just to clarify, I think that 28% that was in my PowerPoint budget presentation was over the last three years, Commissioner, just to clarify, but there were significant increases in drugs rates and burglaries and egg assaults specifically. We've just seen a lot more stabbing.
I think it was 49% though, over the last four years.
And I'd have to go back and pull the numbers, but it's certainly significant.
Okay.
Thank you.
I think, however, when we have judges who are sending us a message that they're going to dismiss particular cases, we need to move forward to keep our community safe, Julie, would you like to come forward? I'm sorry for cutting you off.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. Julie Risti, Register of Deeds. I just wanted to take a moment, earlier in the meeting, of course, we began with the awards to county employees and through the SDACO, that's the South Dakota Association of County Officials, and I just was very, every year I look forward to the annual conference because of everything that it provides to county officials, and I just wanted to give you this year just a real, brief overview of what the annual conference was this year. It actually offers an opportunity for county officials all across the state of South Dakota to get together and discuss a very long list of important issues affecting counties, such as various financial matters. I mean, there's a very wide array of the tremendous services that counties provide, varied, very extensive taxation and revenue matters, public assistance, county aid liens, which we discuss every week, election laws, motor vehicle matters, preservation and access of records, veterans programs and human services, highway issues, just to name a few. So there are quite a few folks from our county that were out there to take part in, in this really important educational process. The SDACO/SDACC conference also helps to provide many of the educational credits necessary for county officials to maintain our certification every year, so that's an extremely important part of the conference. We were fortunate this year to have the National Association of County Officials Executive Director Matt Chase come and speak, which was very interesting, and he really highlighted some of the important issues facing county government and the importance of local county, local county governments across the state having a united voice to go to the National Association, which ultimately affects the lobbying efforts that take place throughout the year in Congress and the Obama administration or whatever administration is in place at the time. In any event, Matt talked about the tax-exempt municipal bonding issue, which is really at the forefront and a real significant concern that we have right now because Congress is considering making, and I believe he said it was $480 million worth of projects that counties have had over the last several years, are now being considered to be taxable by the federal government, which is a huge, tremendous tax burden for county taxpayers. So that is one of the things that NACO is trying to lobby to try to prevent that, and there were other issues, and I'll, I know Commissioner Barth attended the conference, and I'll just, in an effort to expedite here, because I know you have a long list of things on your agenda, that's the one thing that's a very serious concern, I think, that we have, and there were other things that, that were brought up as well. I attended several very excellent educational presentations that were pertinent to the duties of my office, such as the session by the South Dakota Society of Professional Land Surveyors concerning plating issues, a session concerning long-term preservation and proper handling of the documents that in my office are perpetual, a presentation concerning the Uniform Commercial Code, UCC filings online through the Secretary of State's office, and there'll be a few changes coming that way, a session concerning title abstracting, various land record issues, the importance of microfilm in a digital world. As we're moving ahead with a lot of digitization, we have to be careful not to lose the integrity of, of the preservation process, and that's extremely important. And then, of course, there was the participation in discussions concerning potential changes to various state laws that we may be taking part in this next legislative session. So all in all, it was a great opportunity to be able to attend the conference, and I just wanted to give you a brief overview through my eyes and just let you know how much I appreciate being able to attend it every year. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Julie. Does anyone have any questions of Julie? Thank you. Any other public comments on items outside of the agenda? If not, we'll move on to item 10.
Item 10, under regular business, is a hearing to consider an application for a special event malt beverage license and wine license for the retreat at Pointer's Ridge for a fundraiser event on October 5, 2013. The auditor's office has received those applications, and they have been forwarded on to the sheriff's department, state's attorney's office, and the planning department, and there were no objections reported. And Deb Klebenoff has been patiently waiting to answer any questions that the commission may have regarding the fundraiser or the applications.
Thank you, Cindy. Deb, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Very good. If no other comments, does anyone have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and I'm assuming to approve, correct? Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
To approve the application for the October 5 event. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you for coming.
Thanks for coming. Item number 11 is to consider a recommendation to reject submitted bid for Project MC-50-300-118-1, low slump concrete overlay on structure on County Highway 109, two miles south and one mile west of Garrison, and consider authorizing the auditor to republish the notice to bidders at a later date. D.J. Boothey.
Good morning, Commissioners. D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. On September 11, pursuant to your authorization, we advertise, or we let bids for this low slump overlay project, and we quickly found out late this summer that contractors were very, very, very busy in and around Sioux Falls and the metropolitan area. Private work, especially with developments, has really ramped up, and public work has absolutely not slowed down, and so contractors are very busy. We had a bid estimate, an engineer's estimate, of just over $201,000, and the bid for this project came in at $316,586.61, well over the bid estimate, and so what we would And so what we would like to do and would like to request today is to reject this bid and we will look at re-advertising it sometime over the wintertime, the construction project next, next spring or early summer. We find, we feel like we've received much more favorable bids next year.
Thank you, D.J. Does anyone have any questions, D.J.? D.J., you only had the one bid, is that correct?
That's correct, and, and that's more than likely, from what I understand. The construction method, there's a couple different overlay types that you can do on a, on a bridge. And there's two contractors somewhat locally that do those overlays. And one is a low slump overlay and, and one of them is a different type of epoxy gypsy seal overlay. And the two contractors each specialize in that, their own type of overlay. And so if we bid one or the other, we're, we're only going to be receiving one bid unless it's a regional contractor that bids it. And these bridges just aren't big enough to, to attract a, a small, or a larger contractor.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
To approve the rejection?
Rejection.
Is there a second?
Well, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the rejection and rebid it. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item twelve is consider a bid award for one stainless steel conveyor for the Minnehaw County Highway Department. The bids were opened on September eleventh, 2013. D.J. Boothey.
Morning, Commissioners. Again, D.J. Boothey. This bid award is for a piece of machinery that we had budgeted in our long-range plan for this year. I think we had budgeted fifty or sixty thousand dollars. And when we began investigating it more closely, we found out that it would be a little bit more than that. We went ahead with the bid advertising and bid opening and the low bid came in at, at the seventy-seven thousand dollars. This piece of equipment will be used to drop our sand in upon delivery and pile it into our, our salt dome, I'm sorry, salt, not sand. That's a picture yesterday of what our salt dome looks like. And you can see that it doesn't pile anywhere near the, the height of the capacity of our, our structure itself. We're told by vendors and, and such that we can get thirty percent more capacity inside our structure by using one of these conveyor systems. The state uses a conveyor system, the city uses a conveyor system, and, and we are looking to gain capacity without having to build another structure. And so we would like to use one of these conveyor systems also. So today, we're requesting your favorable award of this contract.
Thank you, D.J. Does anyone have any questions? Commissioner Barth? D.J., would it be possible to borrow the state's or the city's?
Both, both the city and the state have a different structure type, and so they have a fixed mounted conveyor system. And, and ours, because of the structure type, will be a mobile structure, our mobile conveyor. It has wheels on it where you're able to move it deep into the structure or pull it out as it fills up. The state and the city both have the taller salt domes that, that drop into a stationary location.
Any, any chance that we'd be able to rent ours to Moody County or anything?
If they were interested in it, we would be open to speaking with them about it. A lot of the, the smaller counties, they use a salt-sand mixture, where we use a strict salt mixture. That's what this conveyor will be used for. The, the sand would have a grittier texture, which could increase the, the wear and tear on the machinery itself. So we'd have to look into that a lot further, but this, this conveyor will be specific for just assault.
Commissioner Kelly, I think was.
What's the expected life on this thing?
That's a good question. What have we been told or what are we estimating?
Maybe both.
We're thinking probably ten to fifteen years. The, the manufacturer documentation, I think it says twenty years, but I really have a hard time believing that. Maybe if we washed it every night, but I, I don't see it lasting that long. It's, it's going to be made out of the same material as our salt dispensing units on the back of our truck. And we're getting ten to twelve years out of those. And so I think that this will be close to that.
Commissioner Hyverdner?
I was just going to make the comment that it was built out of stainless steel and that probably reflects partly the cost. And it's just because of what you're putting through it. The salt is corrosive and you've got to have stainless steel.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
A second.
Motion and a second to approve. Any other comments or questions? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
We have one nay vote. Motion is approved four to one. Item thirteen.
Is to authorize the chairman to sign a preliminary engineering agreement with Civil Design, Inc., to replace bridge number fifty dash two eighty-nine dash zero six zero located four miles west of Sherman on County Highway one fourteen. D.J. Boothey, oh, Shannon Schultz.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Shannon Schultz, project senior engineer at the Highway Department. This is a routine action to basically begin preliminary engineering and design for a bridge replacement project that is also on our long-range plan. The current structure was built in nineteen thirty-eight. It just, it's time to be replaced. It has a sufficiency rating of thirty-three point nine, zero being, you know, failed, one hundred being brand new. So it's definitely the end of its useful life. Any questions about that?
Mr. Kelly?
Shannon, do you do traffic studies before you make the decision to replace or close?
No, traffic studies are completely independent of the need to replace a bridge.
But if only one car a week goes over this bridge, I mean, that's.
That's a good point, Mr. Kelly. This particular one is an off-system bridge. No, that's not true. This is on a county highway. I shouldn't have it in memo. It's just west of Sherman. So it is on our paved system.
It is?
Yes.
Okay. That answers my question.
It is on our paved system. One fourteen. Thank you, D.J.
Any other questions, Shannon? Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item fourteen is a briefing on proposed changes to the Minnehaw County Vehicle Use Policy and the addition of a Minnehaw County Vehicle Replacement Policy. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. As part of your discussion, you have indicated your desire to incorporate either into the purchasing policy and/or vehicle use policy, some standards regarding not only the replacement of county vehicles, but how we dispose of them, either through the surplus auction or through transfers between departments. As part of this process, and this is something that we, you know, we began looking at a while back ago for you, and that one of the things that kind of hinders a, a policy for, for us is the fact that we don't operate a, a one-stop standard motor pool fleet, which most of the, a lot of the standards that we researched in policies were predicated on that. So as we looked at this, we tried to glean from those things, maybe some common things that we were seeing in policies that could be applicable under the current system that we have, which is basically each department does some of those management of those replacements. As we looked at it, one of the things that was almost universal is that all of the policies recommend a replacement of sedans, light vans, light trucks and SUVs at six years or a hundred thousand miles. And that, that seemed to be a fairly consistent standard in all the policies that we, that we did. You will see, if you take a look at the graph that we provided you, and it starts in section three and four, which is all the underlined section, we've incorporated that as well. It says six years of service or a hundred thousand, but also recognize that specialized equipment, particularly heavy highway construction equipment and those kind of trucks, may require the use of their own customized replacement guidelines and schedules. And we didn't attempt to address that in this particular policy. And that we also established some standards that a vehicle could be replaced prior to that in the event, of the six years or a hundred thousand, in the event that major repairs in the foreseeable future exceeded fifty percent of the resale value of the vehicle, that the vehicle cannot be kept in dependable operating condition any longer, that the vehicle doesn't meet safety standards, that the vehicle hasn't had a change in use, that it's not being used for the intended purpose for which it was intended, and that, and that the, and if the department can demonstrate that the equipment no longer performs its dedicated use satisfactorily or sa, or safely. We also said in replacing those vehicles is that we want to purchase the most economical and fuel-efficient vehicles appropriate for the mission that the vehicle will be supporting, and that we wanted to limit off-road four-wheel-drive vehicles to only those absolutely necessary for emergency response or off-road requirements, and that we were encouraging the use of passenger vehicles or light-duty pickup trucks in lieu of the SUVs, full-size sedans and large trucks. The other issue that we took a look at in the replacement policy is establishing minimum use standards and otherwise making sure that the vehicles that we, that we had under our control were being used and weren't, weren't just sitting around. And a lot of the policies that we looked at had indicated that a vehicle must be used a minimum number of miles every three months or annually to justify their existence. In that range, we saw anywhere from twenty-two hundred and fifty miles every three months, or excuse me, per month, or twenty-seven hundred and fifty. So we did a proposed policy that set a standard of two thousand, two hundred and fifty miles every three months that the vehicle would have to use. Now, we also established some exceptions to that and some special, you know, and, and a process where a department should justify that if the vehicle wasn't being used those miles, that there at least was a review of that and a justification on why that vehicle should be maintained in our fleet, given that. And then we also established a methodology for disposal of the vehicles. And that we did establish a policy or establish a process for transferring vehicles between departments and that, that that had to be approved during, by the county commission, that the proper adjustments and accounting transactions were made within the department budgets based upon the current Kelly Blue Book trade-in values. That also seemed to be a consistent theme that we saw. Now, like I said, most of those are detailed. All the changes that we were proposing are detailed in sections three and four of the policy. As I look at this, I'm not sure that we would put section three and four in the employee manual as much as we would probably put it in the department head policies and procedures manual and that. And so section three and four could basically stand on their own. What we're doing today is just simply briefing you. Now, I've tried to share some of these thoughts with some of the departments that have had, you know, operate bigger fleets and that. And my intent would be to sit down with the department heads and particularly with those departments that do manage these kind of vehicles. And again, after your input and getting a direction from the commission, to see where we go with this with the departments and that. And then the goal would be then to formalize a final policy and that for your consideration. But I am certainly not asking you to do that today, nor are we prepared today, but we just wanted to make sure we were on the right track, at least developing something based on the, the discussions that you've had, both during the budget process and what you've had here at this table.
Thank you, Ken. Thank you for your work reviewing this.
Oh, can I add one other piece of information? I'm sorry. If we did the standards, and I put this piece of information in for you, if you did the standards that we've, we've talked about, particularly the replacing the vehicles at six years or a hundred thousand miles, we estimated, based on the last inventory that we did on our fleet, of where our cars are all over, and that on the non-law enforcement vehicles, on the, on the sedans and light vehicles, we would have to replace twenty-seven out of sixty-six, or forty-one percent of our current fleet to, to meet that six-year or a hundred thousand mile standard. And then, and I attached the spreadsheet also for your, for your perusal. So we have a lot of vehicles that already exceed that. In the Sheriff's Department, when we take a look at the police cruiser for the passenger vehicles, et cetera, we would have to replace twenty-two out of forty-seven, or forty-seven percent, just to meet those particular six years or a hundred thousand mile standard. It's, it's, and that was the list that we had prepared as of August of 2012. So this is something that we can't take lightly as we go ahead and try to establish some standards and try to establish a policy, because we do have a lot of vehicles right now that do exceed that standard. So, but the standard of six years, a hundred thousand miles seems to be fairly consistent throughout the industry that we see.
Comments? Commissioner Hyverdner?
Well, I read through this and I read through the list of vehicles. I guess I didn't see, Ken, that you had a forty-one percent and a forty-seven percent replacement value, but just looking at what I had looked at, I just think it's unreasonable to say six years or a hundred thousand miles. The two vehicles that I drive both have, one's almost a hundred thousand, the other's well over a hundred thousand, and they're both more than six years old. There's nothing wrong with either of them. If we've got maintenance documents and guidelines for replacements, if there's issues with these vehicles, I think we can bump both of those numbers up. I just think that's being unrealistic to put it that low. If you look at, we've got forty-one percent in the non-Sheriff vehicle ones, and some of those have pretty high mileage on it, and obviously they're still driving.
And again, we just simply, we're taking a look at what the research told us on all the policies that we were looking at. And again, part of this is predicated, and I want to stress that, part of this is predicated upon outfits and organizations that have, have one fleet management person or department that manages all of it, not the, not the differences that we see with each department.
Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, one comment. I, I think that a hundred thousand miles maybe came from, that's usually when a new transmission is needed in a vehicle. And I don't know whether that, I mean, that's what they warranted the transmissions for and, and that's when they began having problems. However, yeah, I think it could be adjusted, because I, I mean, my vehicle's got a hundred and fifty thousand miles on it almost. And, but I think we ought to, I think this is a great policy. And, and I think we ought to institute it over a four-year period. So that right now, we're not committed to buying twenty-seven or thirty new vehicles. And I think you need to exclude completely, and Mike's probably going to talk about this, but a police car is a different animal. And I, I think the emergency vehicles have got to have some sort of different policy. One other thing is all, except all law enforcement cars, I, I certainly think we ought to identify every vehicle in Minnehaw County, either on the back or the door or somewhere. But otherwise, it's great.
Other comments? If not, we'll go to the department heads and obviously Sheriff Mills.
Well, I appreciate the fact that Ken mentioned that it's work in progress and that it's something that we'll have an opportunity to have input on as we build it. And that's the discussions that Ken and I had. In particular, I don't want to replace all those cars. Quite frankly, what happens is we take our line cars and once they get, you know, enough miles on them that, that we're not comfortable with them being used for emergency driving pursuits, those types of situations, we're able to move those into a fleet of cars that we utilize for non-emergency in-town activities. Example being civil process service. Another example would be that I need to have a number of vehicles available for jail transports, because today, for example, I might have two dental appointments, I may have one that has to go to an x-ray and then one that has to go to the doctor, all about the same time. So we maintain some of those older cars with a lot of miles on them, because they're going to drive, you know, across town. Those cars are also not going to fall within your nine thousand mile annual guideline. So I do like the fact that, that if you're going to put a policy and there's, and there's going to be exceptions, because we don't want to encourage, you know, driving a vehicle more, because we've been discouraging, you know, mileage on vehicles because of the, of the cost of gas. So we, we've taken steps to reduce that. I just don't want to go backwards with that and I like the flexibility. And maybe even if it was the opportunity to work with our liaison commissioner on, you know, kind of. if it was the opportunity to work with our liaison commissioner, you know, kind of reviewing what our fleet is and how we do it, but, given the budget that I have from you, I manage that by coming in and getting a handful of new cars every year, and put them where I need them most, and then I rotate those other ones down into positions where we don't need a pursuit vehicle. So I just appreciate the fact it's work in progress. Ken wants to sit down, and we'll work through it, and I'll work with my liaison commissioner or whatever you choose on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Commissioner?
Sheriff, could I ask a question? Don't your vehicles also spend a lot of time, say, just operating without moving? I mean, they, you know, it's 25 below zero, you're not going to, you know, turn off the motor while you're, you know, at a highway rest stop, looking for your next call or whatever. You're going to leave it running, you've got all that computer stuff and everything going. So miles is not necessarily an accurate way to judge a police car's usage.
Nor is the Kelly Blue Book value on a squad car. But you're right, I mean, there is a lot of idle time, and they're at accident scenes, or they're, they've got a report of special attention on a domestic, so they may sit there for an hour watching the house because someone's been driving by, those types of things. Yeah, they, squad cars age in dog years.
Thank you. Any other department heads who'd like to make a comment? Good morning, Kyle.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Helseth, Equalization. I guess more for information, we manage one of the smaller fleets. I have nine vehicles at our appraiser's disposal. Under the guidelines that are set forward, we have to replace 66% of them. Six of them are well over 140, 150,000 miles, some of them are even 14, 15 years old. So it's going to be interesting to implement this. I agree with Commissioner Kelly, we have to do it over a lengthy period, but it's a good start.
Well, as Ken said, this is a rough draft, and we have to have a policy, frankly, and I'm the one that started this process, because frankly, we can't do it based on the best sales pitch and the most emotion, and I'm not criticizing what's already been brought up, but our numbers are black and white, and everybody's got needs, and we got a budget we have to live with. So this is a starting point, it's a draft, we're not going to implement it the way it is, I'm confident there will be changes, and we want everybody's input. I mean, that's the reason for calling it a briefing on proposed changes. I think over the next few months, that we'll have opportunities to refine this. How it's implemented is going to have a budget impact, so that needs to be addressed. So this is more than just a work in a process, it's going to be a long conversation about trying to meet the needs of all the department heads and still meeting our budget requirements, and I appreciate your comments, and some people will be affected more than others. That's just the way policies are implemented, but thank you for your input. Anyone else? DJ, would you like to make a comment?
I'd just like to echo what the other guys said, that I appreciate, the Highway Department appreciates that there is draft policy available, and that we're working towards having a policy. One thing that I would just like to state, that maybe there should be some consideration for some flexibility. We have probably a half a dozen vehicles that it's really important that they get ran into the ground until they're not worth a dime, just because of the way that they're treated out on some of the crews, and the way that they get dirty and asphalt in them, and it would be a shame to do that to a vehicle that's 90,000 miles, that still has $10,000 worth of value to it. So there's definitely a certain number of vehicles that we have that are at the last end of their life, but we want to keep those and continue using them. So that's the only comment that I have.
Do you want an exception on the Ford Ranger pickup that's got 958,000? 957,000?
I think that's an air.
I didn't say any three times for that thing.
How do we write a policy for that?
That vehicle must be sitting in the graveyard somewhere else.
We do have a county museum.
We were just looking at some of our Ford tractors yesterday, and it got brought up that we should give them to the museum.
Call Detroit, or you're still using it. We'll take pictures.
Other comments from department heads? Thank you for your input, and as Ken suggested, he will be visiting each of the department heads individually to talk about the needs and suggestions that you have before he comes back for another conversation with some changes, and Commissioner Hybarger has talked about the 100,000-mile issue.
And this has been very helpful, you know, for me, particularly to kind of get a flavor of where the commission wants to go on some of this, so that we can have that discussion with the department heads and see what we can incorporate. So appreciate that.
Thank you for your work. Any other comments before we go to Item 15? If not, Item 15.
Consider motion to adopt the final FY 2014 Minnehaw County budget. Ken McFarland.
Based on your conversation that you had earlier today, I'm going to adjust my presentation just a little bit, and that prior to any of your consideration of Aaron McAllen's request, and that the final budget for Minnehaw County would be $68,735,520. And that if you are inclined to support, and thanks to Darlene's hard work, and we've incorporated all the documents that we need, that, but if you were to incorporate Aaron's request, that would increase the budget to $68,791,522. That is an add of approximately $56,002 to the budget. Now, if you do that, and this is one of the things I want to point out, because this has been important to you, but obviously, the question will come, where do we find it? Where do we get the money? All right. Prior to Aaron's request, the cash applied number, which you have indicated that you've always wanted to keep, you know, right at three or under, our cash applied in the general fund was at $2,961,330. If you approve this the way we've got it done, this would reset cash applied at $3,020,132. So it's just slightly above that $3 million threshold that you had considered important to you. Now, prior to this, prior to this request, some of the changes that we've incorporated since the provisional, again, prior to this, we were having an increase of $64,000, and that was primarily to reflect, and to get our most accurate count we could, based on payroll changes that we received, you know, with people moving in, moving out, readjusting the budgets, and that, and accounting for any benefit changes. The other thing that we had to do, of course, is readjust some of it, or some of our revenue calculations. You know, we had to change the DOC contract for the offices upstairs, because that wasn't going to be in our mix anymore. And we had to do a recalculation for our centrally-assessed properties, once we got that information from the Department of Revenue, and we had to, of course, wait for the confirmation that what they were going to allow us for a new growth calculation, which you know went from 1.92% down to 1.88%. So all of those changes, and that we were coming in with you with a increase, primarily on payroll, and decrease in revenues of $64,119. Aaron's request, of course, boosts that up by that $56,002. But if you're inclined to do that, we do, the total budget would be $68,791,520. Darlene has calculated, and we have all the related supporting budget documents ready for your signature, if you are inclined to consider that request. Otherwise, you can sign the ones that are in front of you, if you are not inclined to consider the request.
Any questions, Ken? Commissioner Kelly?
Ken, when, the growth in Sioux Falls exploded in the last year and a half, couple of years, when are we going to see the results of that? When are we going to start seeing more tax dollars? And I realize there's quite a delay there.
There is. I mean, you know, right now, what we're collecting, you know, remember, you're collecting on the 2012 taxes due and payable in 2013, and the 2012 taxes are based on assessments that were the legal assessment date of November 1 of 2011, I believe, or 2010? 2010. So you've got, you've always got a delay, and so I anticipate next year, we should see more of a growth and a boom in our valuations and in our new growth calculations. Right now, we're so far behind.
So in November 1st, they'll go out and do the assessments.
November 1st.
And those will be for 2014 taxes. Is that correct?
2015.
2015 taxes, so, well, it's 2014 payable in '15. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then, so that first collection in 2015 should reflect what's happened this year. Okay, thank you.
Some exceptions.
Huh?
It will reflect what's happening this year with some exceptions. Those exceptions being tax incremental.
Oh, yeah, I understand that.
And those in and of themselves are like the Pentagon facility. That's $15 million of value that we moved.
We aren't going to send a nickel out of that for 20 years.
That's correct.
That's why we should have an interest in what these TIPS are.
We made that argument at one of the retreat sessions that we were originally on.
Didn't work very well either, did it?
Any other questions? I also will respond to the growth issue, and if you look at the growth issue, a lot of it's come in healthcare and education, which, if you compare, there's not any revenue generated. Obviously, there's more rooftops, but 57th Street South is where you see a lot of that growth, and that's all going to Lincoln County. So that also has an effect, and when we have growth like we've had in public safety issues, we're never going to be able to keep up with just the property tax issues that we're faced with, and if you look at the increase in the provisional budget from $64,119 to adding the 56 for the additional person in the state's attorney's office, that's only $120,000 in an increased budget of whatever number you want to use for public safety, 28% over the last three years. I mean, the solution is a, frankly, it's a close to a train wreck. The whole problem of the growth that we have in the, in certain segments of our responsibilities versus the increase in revenue just does not balance itself out. So I think there's enough money in the system, but frankly, it has to be redirected, or the formula has to change, because we don't get any sales tax revenue. And everybody that I talk to says, well, you have 7% increase in sales tax, and I said, no, we don't. The city does, and the state does. They both have significant contingency reserves. I don't think we have a dollar for contingency reserves, but we are responsible for what I would call the, in some cases, the negative side of the government with healthcare issues, with public safety issues, and for frankly, those people who can't help themselves. So we need to figure out a better formula than what we have, because this formula is not going to work forever.
Commissioner, and if I could, just to, for purposes of folks in the audience, this proposed budget also includes, remember, we had three grant positions that were temporary positions in 2013 that you've authorized to be permanent for 2014. Those include, excuse me, a deputy state's attorney, a deputy public defender, and the coordinator for the JDAI initiative. There's also two new positions, which include a human services caseworker and an engineer in the Highway Department, and we also have five proposed correction officers and a deputy sheriff position in the jail to help us as we get narrowed down to how we're going to handle the issue of detoxification within our community for next year.
Again, to summarize, all of those positions, except one, in the Highway Department are related to public safety and human services issues. I mean, it's pretty black and white, what the problem is. Commissioner Kelly?
We're going to need to amend, there has to be a motion to amend the budget. Ken, can you help me on what that motion should be on Aaron's deal?
Sure. I, if you are inclined to do this, I would simply say that you would authorize the inclusion in the 2014 budget of the one investigator position in state's attorney, and that, and once you do that, then I'm going to ask you for another motion to adopt the budget at the specific dollar amount with that included.
That was exactly what my motion was going to be.
A two-step process.
I'll second that motion for the state's attorney's position.
Do you want to restate the motion?
It's to authorize inclusion of the state's attorney's investigator position in the 2014 budget.
That's the first motion.
That's the first motion.
We have a motion and a second.
Just a comment on that. When I visited with Aaron yesterday, he showed me, on just one case, he had a stack of DVDs this high. I mean, and that was not unusual, oftentimes, there's many, many more than that, but I think this is really important for the whole organization, for the whole legal organization in the county.
Any other comments? Commissioner Pecas.
Well, I'm going to support the motion, but I also think it's important that people remember that when we have upgrades, when we have changes in an operating system, we have to be very mindful of the fact that that can have some unexpected consequences. For example, doubling the time of just completing necessary DVD production. I remember when we adopted the new CAD system, we couldn't even have the CAD system load on some of our systems, because the entire desktop computers that we had had to be upgraded. So, you know, there can be unintended consequences regarding these kinds of changes, and I sure hope that when they were looking at that new software regarding, well, Arbitus, or whatever it was, that of course, they included our, the state's attorney's office, the person involved with the IT over there, as well as our own IT, you know, because this is also a cautionary tale.
Any other comments? Kirsten?
And just to be clear, that was the addition, that was a change in systems adopted by city.
Right.
So, just so everyone's clear about that, and that responsibility falling to the state's attorney's office.
I'd like to make a comment on that, too.
I think you already are.
It's been a couple of years, but when the state put in a new computer system for the treasurer's registration of vehicles, we had to declare an emergency in Minnehaw County, and the whole department on their ground to a halt with the implementation of the improved system.
Any other comments?
It's all true.
You know, I will tell you that I know, when Aaron and I talked last week, that the case that the judge was attempting to throw out, that we weren't meeting the needs of the court system, was not just a simple case, it was a rape case, and I would hate to be responsible for someone not being prosecuted because of the fact that we didn't do our due diligence in time, so that this case was dismissed because of time issues. So it is a significant issue that needs to be addressed. Anyway, we have a motion and a second to approve the position that the state's attorney requested for $56,002. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Now, we need to adopt the final budget, correct?
Correct. Commissioners, what I passed out before you, this is the annual budget for the county that does incorporate that position into the budget. As you can see, what it did with the issue of cash applied, it does raise it in the general fund by that dollar amount. The total budget is $68,791,522, and you, all the changes have been made in the expense side of the ledger, that means a fine. of finance, and that the, we have the annual budget sheet there and the levy sheet for you to sign that supports this budget. And on the backside, Darlene has indicated where those changes were from the provisional to this final. And again, almost all of it was in the area of payroll adjustments, you know, for benefit selections and for as people hire, new hires, resignations, et cetera, as we made those adjustments.
Commissioner Kelly?
The cash applied number, Ken, shows here is 3,307,286, and you, I thought, had told us 3,020.
The number that you're looking at, Commissioner, on top, that is the cash applied in all of the funds of the county that we-
Oh, what, okay, what below?
The general fund cash applied, if you go down, cash applied by fund for the general fund, it's $3,020,001,32. And that's the one where you had set the target that you wanted to be under three for the general.
But where'd the 3,307 come from?
That is the total of the cash applied in all the other funds of the county. Highway fund, building fund, whatever it may be.
Anyone else have any questions for Ken? I want to reiterate to Darlene and Rich that, again, through this whole budget process, you guys have been incredibly supportive of our need and spent tons of time and hours putting this together, along with other staff members. But Rich is sitting in the back and Darlene is sitting here, and I just want you guys to know that we do recognize your extra efforts. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the final budget, finalized budget, and I'm going to make sure this is right. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
The next item is Manyaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports.
Commissioner Farth?
I have a couple of things I'm sorry to say. First of all, I just would comment that the city council, an eight to zero vote, put in funding for a collection facility in the museum. We'll see where that goes, but that's a positive there. Then I'd like to remark on the convention that I also attended. The issues that I was pushing as far as a 10% alcohol tax got nowhere, but it was kind of a unique situation in that every single county commissioner I talked to thought it was a good idea, every single one. However, none of them were willing to bring it forward because their comment was, we've tried it so many times. Well, the fact is, we tried it in 2007, and three days into the legislative session, we dropped it with the idea of doing a petition. Well, in those days, Ken made us stand outside collecting signatures. It was like, you know, 15 degrees, and I'm trying to get someone to sign a petition to raise taxes. It was tough. But we really have not tried it every year. Yes, there's been proposals brought to the state convention every year, but they've been killed every year. 2008, 2009, 2010, 2011, 2012, now 2013, and they couldn't go for it. But I did pursue it all the way to the very last day on the floor session and required a majority vote to bring it back for discussion. And I think maybe five out of the 30 counties voted with me. The only one I know for sure was Pennington County that voted with me on that. Then I made my second proposal, which was to not raise taxes, but to change the take on the existing taxes with 37% going to the counties. And that required a two-thirds vote to adjust. And I noticed that Bennett County voted with me on that one, as well as Pennington, but we were far from having the two-thirds to bring it off the floor. So they were killed immediately. I would say also that, again, everyone thought it was a great, great idea, they just couldn't bring themselves to make the effort. Pennington County did suggest that we meet together sometime and, because our interests are not necessarily the same as every other county. And Bennett County today is facing a vote on their opt-out. So if you're from Bennett County, make sure to go vote today. Basically, I would say that was, I could have used some more commissioners out there. You know, when I would speak, then five other people would speak. Like, I gave it my best shot, I really did.
Thank you, Jeff.
Commissioner Kelly?
You know, that, Jeff's comments point out, we've got one vote, is that what I understand?
That is correct.
Ken?
On the floor.
On the floor. Especially since Pennington County understands this problem, too. And I imagine there's a couple of other larger counties that have the same issue. Maybe it's time that we start looking at those counties and reassessing what we're paying to the South Dakota SDACC and perhaps take some of those funds and be looking at our own representation up there to get this job done. They seem to consistently not care about this issue. I think they're sticking their heads in the sand, but because in a rural county where there's only a population of 5,000 or 10,000 people, they just don't see the issue, and so they vote against it. And I, I think Jeff points out, I'm sure he gave a yeoman's job. You know, I saw when I was up there at one meeting that I went to, that it's, it's tough. The little counties control the SDACC, there is no darn question about it.
Just for clarification purposes, under the bylaws of the association, because of our size and the amount of money that we do pay into the coffers, and even the due structure, though, is set by the bylaws and it's based on a base rate and along with the population and that, so, but, because of our size, we're entitled to a permanent seat, along with Pennington, on the board of directors. I mean, so, and a lot of times, those seats rotate, you know, amongst counties, but because of our size, we get a permanent seat on the board in that. But you are correct, when it comes to the general membership on the floor, when you vote on items, and that it's not proportional based on population or anything else, and we do, we get one vote, same as Bennett County, when it comes time to actually vote on the floor.
But in exact, the, we got the two votes, but then you've got, what is it, five others or seven others? The mindset of those other counties doesn't change. And I guess, I just, I think it's something we should look at because we're spending a lot of money with the SDACC, and maybe there's some questions to what we're getting out of it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Heiberg?
I have a liaison report.
Certainly.
When you're ready for that. And I left my notes at home, so I'm going off the top of my head, but we did hire a, not us, but the state hired a part-time 4-H advisor for our 4-H liaison position. And she started, I believe, on Monday. She's part-time with us and part-time with Union County. And at a future date, they will come over and introduce her and then talk about what their program will be for this fall.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? If not, is there any new business? Commissioner Litz?
My status has improved immensely here. Bob Litz from the auditor's office. And although it's not in the purview of the auditor's office, when I was out in Skirfish recently, I ducked into a meeting for the veteran service officers, and there was a concept that came up now. And I don't know all the meetings that you commissioners get to go to because there's a lot of stuff that happens behind the scenes here, but one thing that was brought up was Veterans Court. And they talked extensively about it, and I thought it sounded like a pretty good idea. And the idea behind the Veterans Court, of course, is to divert the veteran that gets in trouble to the resources that the VA might have to help them out. You know, and I understand that Captain Hookman is the point man down here in Manyah County. Sheriff said they're working on it, but I thought it sounded like a good idea and could possibly save the county a lot of money. And besides, you know, a few years ago, we had a lot of yellow ribbons on the trucks and cars running around, and I think this might be one of those opportunities to support the troops. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you. Any other comments? If not, I'm going to make just one. Last week, I had the opportunity, and Commissioner Heiberg was there, too, to go to the drug court. And that's the first one I've been able to make because of schedule. But I have to tell you that that was one of the most emotional things I've ever been through. Those four people, young people, who were in drug court, who passed, if you will, and some of them had been sober or whatever for as many as 600 days, all gave testimonials that, I don't know about Cindy, but I had a tough time keeping it together because, frankly, their backgrounds and what was going on in their life before they got into the system, if you will, and were headed for prison, was incredible. One young lady that I won't name, obviously, talked about growing up in Mitchell, and she had a, I don't know what you'd call it, a media presentation or whatever of her life before she came into the system, and took pictures of parks, of where she slept, took pictures of dumpsters where she ate. And she was extremely talented young lady. In fact, a couple of the people talked about her creative writing skills and that she could get a job anywhere, maybe even at the Argus Leader, to write and do things that, frankly, were just about professional, and she had never had any professional training. And unfortunately, she got caught up in the wrong crowd because her parents weren't existent, and she ended up getting pregnant, had a very cute little girl, and went through the whole system and became a very, will become a very productive person in this community. And all three of the other ones who were participating in drug court had similar stories. And it all comes from backgrounds and parents. And there was a number of attorneys in the audience who talked about, they knew some of these kids, obviously, before they got into the system and were constant clients, if you will. And I don't know about you, but Cindy, you can make any comments you want. I was extremely proud of the fact that Manyah County was part of this because it's going to make a significant difference in those four people's lives, and I wish that they all got more press, frankly, and what, and there were TV stations there, got more press on where they came from, what they did, and what they accomplished, along with the support of Judge Rypel, but other pieces of the county's system to frankly, put them back into reasonable accommodations, reasonable locations, and all four of them had jobs, which was awesome. So, anyway, do you want to make any comments?
Just that it's still a day-by-day, even though some of them had been clean for over 600 days, it's still day-by-day. One of those four people actually had a death in their family about two days later. Those types of traumas are huge, considering you've been in a drug, you know, in an addictive state already, and now you have a trauma in your family that you weren't really anticipating. If you haven't been to a drug court, go. It is very moving, and it is, people who have accomplished a tremendous amount, probably more than a lot of us have, just because addiction is such a horrible, such a horrible thing. And, you know, kudos and praise to all the people who have put so much time and effort, and the liaisons who have, or their mentors who volunteered time to meet with these people, sometimes on a weekly basis, just to try to get them, to help them to straighten out their lives. So it's very, very good.
Yeah. I'm glad you mentioned the mentor, one of the young men, man, it was one, three women and one male, but he mentioned a lot about what his mentor meant to him. Because if it wouldn't have been for the mentor, who literally got him back on his feet and was there for every hill he had to climb, or every time he fell backwards, he probably would have went to prison. And this gentleman spent an incredible amount of time making sure that this, this young man stayed on track, and after many, many months, he made it through the system. And there's a lot that don't make it through, but I'm, again, I'm extremely proud of what that court has done for those people. Makes putting up with some of the other stuff tolerable. Anyway, any other new business? Shannon?
Old business.
We'll go to old business. Any old business?
Again, good morning, Commissioner Shannon Schultz with the Department of Highways. On September 3rd, this commission granted the permission to solicit informal bids as an emergency project to repair shoulders along Highway 42. As you recall, Highway 42 is the only three miles of concrete we have in our county between Sioux Falls and Brandon, and we bid some concrete repairs. The heavy trucks did not follow the detour signs, they continued to go through the project and deteriorated our shoulders, so that we got permission from the commission to fix our shoulders. However, we got no bids received. Mr. Booth, you indicated earlier, the contractor is busy this time of summer, and again, this just kind of reinforces the fact that there's no interest in taking on new work. So I will say, the good news is, the shoulders are being repaired, and I'm told by Mr. Booth that they'll be done today. So we did have their own forces, and of course, it caused delays or perhaps staving off some other work that had been committed to, but nevertheless, it needed to be done, and it got done. So that is the conclusion of the business.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, DJ, for getting that done. What's the life expectancy, frankly, of doing your service?
Well, they never get driven on, so really, the only deterioration comes from Mother Nature. And that's probably the, perhaps, there's two inches of asphalt out there that got deteriorated. We're putting basically a patch on the parts that got deteriorated. So as long as they don't get driven on, probably as long as the concrete's going to last, which is probably about 12 to 15 years with the recent repairs done to the concrete.
Commissioner Kelly?
Why can we not go back against the drivers that were causing this?
Enforcement, Mr. Kelly. We saw the trucks going through our route. We requested law enforcement and sheriff's department to show up, which they did do. I have not learned if any citations were written. And that's, you know, I guess, if you want to, you give the highway department authority to take pictures and send them to the sheriff's department for ticketing, I don't know how you, you could post a sheriff's department patrol car on each end of the project and anybody who enters the project. But that's no different than speeding signs or-
Well, were they in violation when they were doing it?
Yes, they were not following, well, they're not black and white signs, and Mr. Booth, you can help me out here. Black and white is enforceable, that is ticketable offenses. The orange and yellow signs are advisory, but I think construction detours are ticketable.
Without knowing how it was signed in the particular instance, I'm not sure. Law enforcement was called, is that correct?
They did show up for a little while, about three hours they were there.
Okay.
And again, I did not witness them issuing citations, but I know that they were there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The Southeast District, at their last meeting, had some discussion about hiring the highway department, the state highway people, to go and enforce weight limits in the counties here in the Southeast District. I don't know if that went anywhere, but there was some discussion about bringing them on.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, again, for the extra efforts. Any other old business? If not, we do need to go to an executive session for both personnel and litigation.
DJ.
That's my motion.
Second?
Is there a second? Motion and second to go to exec session for personnel and litigation. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, we'll reconvene at 11 o'clock.